At 7:06, everyone will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation, with your guide, with its just a small form. Dr. Willitt?
I request just, we did have a loss of a faculty or staff member recently, Joel Padavina. Joel passed away recently, so I just wanted to have a moment of silence for Joel. He was custodian for a long time in the Talon public schools and at least a decade or more for TMS. So if we could just do a quick moment of silence in honor of Joel Padavina. So we have some wonderful, wonderful acknowledgements tonight. We're very lucky, we don't always get so many packed in. I would like to kind of flip the agenda a little bit here, if we don't mind. And we have some students, we have some awesome retirees, and then we have you. So what I'd like to do is do the students first. Tonight, we have a salutatorian, Lily Bayum, and a valedictorian, Sulan Zhang here. So I'd like to just give you a little rundown of the, you know, many things that make them amazing. We have a little gift for them, and we wanted to provide an opportunity for you to act, to honor our salutatorian and valedictorian. So is it okay if I call you Lily, because she's the first name, and so on? Lily has taken some of the most challenging classes, TMS. She's consistently enrolling in primary honors courses, UConn AP level. She's qualified for the prestigious Presidential Scholars Program, which entails, it has a very rigorous application process. And she's, you know, done that, and these are all on top of having, obviously, the grades, you know, to rise to the top. If she becomes a finalist in this Presidential Honor, she'll be one of 161 people in the country. And she's got a really great shot. She's immersed herself regularly in extracurricular activities, as you might imagine. She's been on varsity track, soccer, and she's, she's always shining in so many ways. It's just, it's making the school proud to have her here and to be a part of the community. She's won multiple all-conference state awards, she's a member of the National Honor Society and Unified Friends. She's also taught summer school to younger children, so maybe she'll be a teacher. You know, this might be in her future. And she served as an intern at a local STEM camp and volunteers her time regularly as a peer mentor. So I just wanted to just give you an opportunity to really congratulate Lily. Congratulations. So now, as you know, we have our valedictorian here tonight as well, Sulan Zhang. Sulan has also, as you might imagine, taken some of the most prestigious courses available, the hardest courses available, really. Advocated and, you know, for new courses, as she should, to keep us on our toes and making sure we're providing challenging courses for those who want and desire them and have the ability to engage in them. So she's helped improve our school community by making sure we're looking at, making sure that students of all levels have what they need and making sure that kids are getting a comprehensive education. Sulan is very active in extracurricular activities and thrives in positions of leadership. She is the president of DECA, and we know a lot about DECA, Mr. Regisford. A top performer in the state, national, and international DECA competitions. Not easy to do that at all. Member of National Honor Society and president of the newly established World Language Honor Society as well. Talented artist on top of all of that, with numerous accolades in both art and music. Do you have a podcast or anything? Not yet. Want to get on that one? You know, and so there's no end, really, to the talents and the things she, she is able to do. And she's recently been awarded the Connecticut Association of Schools Award in Art. Over the years, she's received many academic excellence awards in marketing, Spanish, English, and so many other things. Congratulations, Sulan. We're so happy for you. Would you, would you feel okay coming up and taking pictures? We can try to have, we have a little R2D2 in front of us, but.
Kids always bring it up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions for the, and also congratulations to the family. Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions, anything you'd like to say?
And you might have mentioned it in your statements there. Just curious what you guys are moving on to, what's the, what's the next step?
I'm going to be going to the University of Richmond.
Do you know what your study will be?
Not yet, possibly biology and neuroscience.
Very cool, very cool.
I'm still ready on my consciousness, but I'm hoping to go into business, maybe a double major or a graduate.
Very cool, very cool. Congrats.
Who do you have with you tonight?
Mother Goose.
Congratulations to you.
Love with that.
Mom and dad, of course.
And let me offer my congratulations as well, listening to the things you've accomplished. I'm absolutely amazed that you both, and thank you. Thank you for everything you've done and everything you're going to do. You're absolutely shining stars and show well upon our districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, at this point, it's meant to honor you and not torture you. So you don't have to feel like you have to stay for the entirety of the meeting or anything. All right, so in any moments, in the next few minutes, if you wanted to, you know, to make your way out. All right, and so tonight, we also have the great honor of having with us some retirees. We also have some small ones for you as well, and congratulations. Amanda Jurgensmeyer in the back here. Amanda has been a para educator at TIS, and she's worked faithfully and wonderfully for the school district since 2011. We're so, we're so sad to see Jurgensmeyer go, but we are very happy that for you, that you'd be starting your next chapter. So congratulations in your retirement, and thank you so much for all of the years you put in. Also with us tonight are Ms. Gonzalez, Nina Gonzalez, a grade one teacher. Has worked with the district from even before than I worked with the district. She's been here since 2003. She's done amazing things and constantly helped, you know, with kids in EGP, just helping them, you know, be better at everything, basically. We're so fortunate to have had her working, you know, with us in Talon, and, you know, we wish her the very, very best in her retirement as well. And last but not least, with us tonight, Judy Baker. Judy is a music educator at TIS. She is basically the mother of Music Time down there, or, or, you know, any title you want. But she, she keeps them going, and it's always, it's always a great pleasure to, you know, to see her do her work. She has worked with the district since 1988. So a long time, we've had the benefit of her guidance, her love and support for children. And she's really helped grow the program because that's, you know, that's where it starts. So kids get their love for music from her, and they go up through the ages. And we're just so fortunate, so, so fortunate to have had Judy Baker with us. So Baker, thank you very much. But any board members want to say anything for our?
Yeah, you know, if you look, look around the room, from the little one in the back to our valedictorian and salutatorian here, all the way to Mr. Regisford and Mr. Sheridan here on the board. This is a testament to your sacrifice, to everything you've done over those last couple of years. They're growing, you're creating amazing things, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I, I just want to say congratulations, and I'm, I'm so happy for you, sad to see you go, but happy for you. I have a pleasure of seeing all of you, knowing two of you. I can't imagine our schools without you. So just thank you, thank you for all you've done, thank you, for everything you've done for our district and for our students. It's just, it's greatly appreciated. Please enjoy every moment of the retirement that you've earned.
We don't usually put pressure on people for pictures, but would you be okay with the pictures? And if you're not, that's okay too. And also, we're not, we're not trying to torture you. Congratulations again. Now, I don't know if board members, if you're aware. It's good to have you for as long as you want, or whatever you want. I'm not sure you're aware, but it is board member appreciation. So as in appreciation of your service, you do have to remember that, you know, these, these are not from our operating funds. So they, they are, they are humbly offered, you know, only going to get you so far. But no taxpayers in Talon. Congratulations and thank you, because board members put in so much energy, so much time, give up so much, all the labor, of course. Want to make sure you're talking better than that. Thank you for your service to the community. It really is a huge sacrifice. You do it, you know, all the hours, all the meetings, just more from the bottom of everyone's heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Willitt, I sincerely appreciate your patience with us.
It's a pleasure, always, always.
All right, well then, thank you. Moving on, are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Minutes for February 7th special meeting, February 13th special meeting, February 14th special meeting, February 15th, sorry, February 14th regular meeting, February 15th special meetings. Any changes?
Good night, and congratulations again. Good night.
All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the listed minutes. Second?
Second.
Are there any discussion?
I just honestly didn't have a chance to go through all of them carefully, so I'm going to have a scene.
Any other discussion? All right, then we shall vote. Jayden? Brian?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Jen? Katie?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And Randy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you all. Public participation. The members of the Talon Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and administration may respond to comments during the points of information. However, consideration of those in attendance, an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting session. We will alternate if there are any people in the room, and there are no people in the room that want to speak. Well, if she does, there have been three, two minutes. Rebecca Rez.
Hi, good evening. First, congratulations to the valedictorian, salutatorian, and retirees. I had an opportunity and privilege to watch the curriculum committee meeting earlier tonight. I was really impressed to hear the details about Talon's Portrait of a Graduate framework. It was well thought out and really exciting stuff. I'd like to say fantastic job to our curriculum coordinator, Mr. Rudy, and all our staff and admin for their dedication and hard work on this initiative. There was also a quick mention of NEASC, and I'm curious if new board members and existing board members, for that matter, understand what the NEASC accreditation process is all about and what the ramifications are if a school loses its accreditation. There are standards that need to be maintained, and there's only so much that admin and staff can do with so little. I can easily pull maybe 100 quotes or more from all of you, any of you, lauding our staff for doing more with less and making it work. However, if the accreditation is lost, that can result in Talon students being rejected from college during application process, being rejected on job applications because their diploma is not from an accredited high school, and an inability to receive financial, federal financial aid for college. So as we continue to chip away at the schools and cut programs and lose staff, increase class sizes and limit options for our kids, please keep in mind that we are in an evaluation period right now, and our accreditation is up for decision in 2026. This is serious, serious stuff. This is Talon's reputation. This is our students' futures on the line. Starting a five-year plan next year may end up being too little, too late. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Online? Hearing none, who close public participation? Thank you. Mr. Bodie, correspondence?
Yes, since I reported last, which has been about a month, we've gotten approximately 42 additional emails and mostly concerning budget, mostly in support of a higher budget than we had historically passed. Some of the things on the list were level services. Some of the things on the list were supporting our music program and not the loss of the teacher. The World Language Program. So that's been the vast majority of those, approximately 42 additional emails. We did get a handful of emails in asking questions. We got one email recently for Dr. Willitt about residency, another email about student files. But the vast majority of the emails came in concerning budget, which we've all seen.
Thank you, sir. Points of information.
Just really quickly, and I actually prepared it this time, you know, I'm not going to go off the rails. Just, and I appreciate that we started this on a high note, because again, that's what it should be about. It should be about starting on a high note, finishing on a high note. Then there's the stuff in between. And so I just want to read a little bit of what my thoughts have been over the last few weeks, and I hope that's okay. So I just wanted to thank the superintendent, town manager, everybody who attended, whether virtually or in person for the joint meeting, between the town council and the Board of Education. I have to be utmost honest, though, in saying that I'm disappointed with the sort of resultless meeting that took place between the town and the Board of Education. In my opinion, it was not positive, and it certainly did not feel as productive as, as I had hoped when walking in. I think my, I've got two gripes, I guess, with how this has all sort of played out. I think one is we've, we can't necessarily set a precedent that baseless opinions are fact. It's a dangerous precedent to set. Opinions are a great thing, and again, we said this, I think, when we were having our sort of conversation a few meetings ago, which is, we live in America. That's one of the greatest parts about this country, that we get to disagree on things and still work with one another. However, when we sit in the seats we're sitting in, specifically as elected officials, our opinions should be focused and based on fact. And there have been several comments from within the past weeks, past few weeks, sort of ending at the joint meeting. And some of them have been, you know, again, and I'll repeat, the $100 million budget comment. The, if a for sale sign went up in our front yards, the homes would be purchased instantly. That the current home buying generation doesn't feel motivated to move to Talon, sort of completely ignoring, you know, my generation, frankly, first-time home buyers. But more importantly, the next generation, the kids who are in our school buildings right now. And so, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on this, but and we still have a lot more to go, as soon. There have been those conversations that, this is my second right here, that have been taking place, that I was not aware of, that I was not invited to be a part of, and I feel spoken for in a couple of different aspects, even though I was not present for those discussions. It was frustrating at the meeting to learn about conversations being taken place between any one board member, never mind chair, vice chair, whoever it is, and the town manager. In this case, it was the board chair and the town manager in a, in a professional setting. It hurts almost to hear that, because the conversations that are happening in private should be happening, and we talked about this a, a plethora. The conversations happening in private should be happening, I feel, right here, in public or in a different setting, as long as it's public. Because now I feel like you've got at least one board member, and that's me, who feels, in a, in a way, powerless in the sense that anything I say, anything the students say, anything the staff say, anything my fellow board members here say. And that, and by the way, that's on both sides of the aisle. It almost feels like it's not being considered because we're already spoken for. And so the town manager's comments about him hearing about Board of Ed budget items was kind of revealing, and it opened my eyes to sort of the possibility that the budget is absolutely being discussed one-on-one outside of these chamber walls. And so again, I want to make sure this gets across, though. I appreciate everybody sitting in this room every week and expressing what it is that you're encouraged to say. And again, I'm just, I'm just in year two and a half, I guess, and I still get nervous about saying things, which is why I've now put it together. But I'm not feeling so great about how this process has played out, to sum up what I've just said. And so I appreciate the chance to say that, and hopefully we can discuss that a little further as to what that means, what it looks like, and, and move forward as a united board. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to echo a few of those points that you did make after leaving the meeting the other night, going back. Even the next morning, with my cup of coffee, thinking about kind of if what was accomplished, what wasn't accomplished. I felt there wasn't, I don't know if it was just the agenda layout or the format, or too many people with too many ideas and too many hypotheticals. I mean, the list of hypotheticals was a mile long, and what Foley could do, couldn't do the town count, but could do what they're going to do with our budget, not do with our budget. And then you have, you know, I asked the question of the financial director, Lisa. She knows it's usually in the 2% to 3% range, where if they budget Board of Ed, yet we're asking for six plus, and they pass zero point whatever for however many years, yet they say the average is two to three. So it's, there's some sort of mishap happening in the process, and I just felt similar to Jayden in a bit of just, I don't know what really came out of that meeting, except a lot of just question and answer, and I didn't feel that there was a direction after that. So I'll just, I'll just say, and I know that's just the way that's been done in the past years, but I don't know if that's moving forward. And I feel that there needs to be a little bit better of a platform or format, or what is the actual goal of the meeting, instead of just the public coming? That's why I felt like 90% of it was the public coming and asking questions, which was fine. But if we were having a joint meeting for the Board of Ed and whatever, the town council, then I tell, I should have been more directed towards that, but that's just my personal. So that's all I'll say.
I do appreciate your insistence.
So I'll say something, I, I just want to thank Jayden and Brian for speaking, for letting us speaking. I think, I, you know, budget, budget season is a lot, and I think it affects all of us, and, and, you know, being here three years and some of you being here, you know, your first year, it's, it's tough. I, I'm, I'm happy to hear, you know, that we're kind of all going through those things together. The joint, joint meeting never really is a, is a, is a great experience, which is tough, you know? And there was a town council meeting last night, honestly, that portion of it was tough. I just, I genuinely hope that we can come to a place eventually with the town where we're, we're in this together. We all feel like we're in this together, whether or not we have opinions that differ, I mean, that's fine, but that we're in this together, working towards the same goal. I do believe, you know, our school district is our town's biggest asset, and so, and most valuable one. And so I, I do hope that we can work together, but I appreciate you both expressing your concerns. And maybe it makes me feel a little better, but I don't feel so great about you either.
So a couple of things, and again, Jayden, just like I said in my email to you, thank you for, not just here, but in the joint meeting, in the meeting before, being willing to step up and voice, you know, your, your concerns, your angst. You know, everybody, everybody has concerns, not everybody says them. I, for one, sincerely appreciate dissenting opinions. And so again, just like you said here, as far as the meetings with the council, or not the council, with the town manager, you know, I've been meeting with the town manager for years. Not only on things pertaining to the town, but also just to get to know him. You know, I've been meeting with Dr. Willitt one-on-one for years, not only on stuff that are board-related, but also educational stuff. I can say with, out of doubt, the concern, you know, in soul that my meetings with the town manager since the budget season did not cover numbers, did not cover anything that was business. It was questioned on the process. It was questioned on what's in that charter over there that the town is required to do. Understanding that, so I could come back here and lead the discussions that I needed to do. But I understand the perspective. I think that you'll also find out that, you know, when you start, when you start asking the town council members, or some in previous times, even Dr. Willitt, one-on-one. Not trying to do business, but again, to understand things so that they can take that back. It's an information gatherer, but again, I understand. As far, as far as the, the meeting on the 22nd, you know, one of the first conversations that Jen and I had, you know, from a leadership perspective, was on that, on that format. That the joint meeting, every year that I've been on the board, has been painful and not overly for that, just. And we sat with Katie and Jacob and said, you know, how can we, one, check the boxes that it says that we have to do, which are very limited, by the way. The charter says we have to have a meeting and we have to talk about this. And I don't know if you heard Mr. Foley in the meeting on the twenty-second, but there were a couple of times in there he said, no, having fulfilled my charter obligation, because he checked those boxes, then the rest of that meeting were an evolution that's happened since then, as far as attempts to make that meeting productive. And there were some changes we tried to put in there to make it productive. I think we gained in some places, I think we remain staying in other places. So is it the perfect meeting yet? Nope. Hopefully it will become that. As we've said before, and I sincerely believe with the cooperation that's available between this board and this council, I think it will be something, something nice. So hopefully we do.
All right, Dana.
Sorry, I had, I'm having problems raising my hand tonight, so, sorry. So anyways, I'm gonna put myself on mute, come back to me, I'm gonna have to relocate the Barkers, sorry.
I'll have one thing, oh, no. So I've been involved in federal government, state government, this is my first time being involved with municipal government. Anyway, I'm disappointed, by the way, that this has been going, I think we can all do better than we've been doing. Everybody, everybody. But I think in particular with that joint meeting, what I found most upsetting was the town manager saying that our inability to come to a consensus meant that there was an opportunity for the budget to be lowered. And I spent some time trying to peel apart that logic, and it doesn't make any sense to me at all because we had a budget that was slightly higher and the budget that we offered ultimately. So I'm not sure how you get to a place where then the final number is lower than what we put before, you know, the town manager and the town council. So at any point, if anyone wants to offer data to me on how we get there, how we got to that place, or why this is the way it works in Tallinn, I would be grateful, and of all yours.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I think, I think what we're all seeing here is that, and we're all feeling here is that the stakes just go very high this year. So, I mean, I think that's a place where we'll have to work on. So, you know, again, as we all, I think, said, hopefully moving forward, things feel, things get easier for us, and we can work as a cohesive.
Dana, you ready?
Yes, my attack dogs have been, sorry about that, everybody. Um, yeah, so first of all, Jayden and Brian, thank you, and Katie and Jen for sharing your feelings about the meeting. I know that I've been to several of those joint meetings, and I will say it's better than my first meeting that I ever had because it was in complete interrogation, the first time, and Tony's laughing, but he knows what I'm talking about. So, but I will say there is still opportunity to grow because it should be a meeting led by the town council chair and with conversations that are fluid with the Board of Ed and the town council to answer questions, why we landed where we landed, and give some substance behind that. I feel like it did fall short. I think that, as Katie, I echoed, I echo Katie with the, the quote that our town manager said, that you've made my job easy, because it sounds like based on our votes is based on how the directive is going to go, which is disheartening because I don't, whether or not we all agreed on what we presented that day, we all agreed to that and/or more. So I feel like we are all aligned when it comes to, this is what we think at bare minimum to continue to sustain the five-year plan that we have. This is, this is it, you know, my nay vote was a nay vote because I wanted more. So, but nevertheless, I think this is our opportunity to, one, make a change and a difference for maybe when, in the future, when it comes down to it, what we're saying in those meetings. I also think some great stuff came out of that meeting. We were talking about Alex sat next to me and asked about asking our state representatives for some opportunity to support the town and the Board of Ed, and putting our state representatives to work for us. So I definitely think that was a high of the meeting, and I hope that our chairs, and vice chairs actually sit down and we can craft a letter that goes to our state representatives to help support. But I would agree with Jayden, I'm not a fan of backdoor stuff, I'm not a fan of not being transparent. I think that it's very important that we do our work in our committees, in the board room. I think we're all here, we all have different passions and reasons for being here, but I think we truly want Tallinn Public Schools to thrive, and I truly think that we want Tallinn to thrive. This is a community we chose to live in, purchase our homes in, or reside in, or some people have left and come back to do so. So I think that we have an opportunity in the next several weeks to really become aligned as possible. I know that we all come from a variety of different backgrounds and thoughts and beliefs, but I think, you know, doing as much alignment as we possibly can for us to support the budget that we put forth and to do, to put forth the support of our five-year plan and make sure that we're not losing positions, programs, class sizes, curriculum opportunities, and there was four of us who got to sit in the social-emotional learning rounds today at TMS, which was phenomenal. So I'd love to talk about that more at a later time, but it definitely, that is a program that supports our entire school, TMS, and can continue to go into other areas. So nevertheless, I'm feeling similarly to my peers that have already spoke this evening. I hope that we can move forward positively as the Board of Education and do what we need to do for Tallinn Public Schools. And congratulations to our retirees, my kids were able to have a couple of those in their classroom, and congratulations to our auditorium, salatorium, I'm sorry I wasn't there this evening.
Thank you, Dana. Brady?
Hi, thank you. I would like to echo what Dana said regarding congratulations to the students and retirees. Certainly, that's great achievements on all fronts, and it's great to see, and an excellent way to start the meeting. I, just in response to comments around the town manager saying that the split vote made his job easier, I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but I thought someone said that that means that he, it's easier for him to lower it. I don't know that he said that, so I was just, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that being completely on record. I don't, I don't remember him saying that. That's one thing. And then the second thing was, we, there was a conversation brought up about asking our state reps for help, particularly around, I believe, unfunded mandates. I did want to just say, I did talk to Tammy about that, and she said they already have commissioned a group to study the mandates and to go through them, and so they are working through that to try to give us some help on that. I don't want to speak for her or say anything out of turn, but I just did want to say that I understand that there is some movement being taken on that front.
Great. Thank you all.
I'll just take a minute, so clarify that the assumption that I made is based on the minutes that appear from last year's meeting, the same, excuse me, sorry, people shouldn't have seen it. And have to do with when the town manager said last year that it had been a consensus, or even an eight to one vote, that he would have left it, would have been much harder for him to shift it to a lower percentage. So I did make an assumption based on historical data that that would be what he meant by that, and he can not comment again this soon.
Chauvinia? All right. Thank you, everybody. We have no student reps today, committee liaison reports. Curriculum?
We had a great meeting today, Portrait of a Graduate, great presentation. There's a whole lot that goes into that and creating that. And I definitely think it's something that we need to bring to the entire board, the Portrait of a Graduate presentation. Put it under Q.
FRC?
Have you been since our last Board of Education meetings? I'd like to report this one.
Yeah, we've had to rearrange our February, having two in March, so we have a lot of data coming your way.
Policy?
Yeah, we'll double up in words, Brian. Policy, we had today, we talked about the kindergarten policy as well as the homeless policy, homeless student policy. It is a rather long policy with several, I mean, the policy has changed almost double or triple, if I'm not mistaken when I was looking at Dr. Willitt. So we are going to, Dan, Jayden and I are gonna review it, and we are going to re-circle back with Dr. Willitt at the next policy meeting to present both of those policies to the next, the BOE meeting subsequent after that. So we'll have some new stuff on the docket soon.
Thank you. Not to leave anybody out. Negotiation?
No, I'm going at this time.
Thank you. Moving on. My apologies that I've been out of town over the weekend, I did not prepare a chairperson's report. So instead, let me just say, and I think Dana mentioned it, in my, let me offer my sincere appreciation, Dr. Willitt, to you, to the staff at the middle school for putting together was, again, you know, these instructional rounds are always wonderful, this one even more so. I have a list of questions and things I want to know more of that comes from that. In my mind, that is an absolute success, so I thank everybody that was a part of that. Also, got the opportunity today to watch the Birch Grove second graders sing their way around the world. So for any of you that have not watched Elementary Kids do a concert, you're missing out on one of the true hoping things in this walk. So my appreciation to the music team down there and the teachers and staff, and everybody it takes to herd cats in such a way that wonderful things like that happen. Thank you. All right, moving on, Dr. Willitt, K1, superintendent's report, review of portal and student performance.
Yes, I am desperately trying to scroll through, it's long minutes there.
I could have talked longer.
Yeah, it's all good. So data portal, you know, we do regularly come back to review this with the Board of Ed. For those of you at home, if you do go to the district website, click on superintendent, down the left side of the menu is the option for the TPS data portal. This is also the link here, so if you want to take a look, you can. I'm going to click it, you know, it's gonna look up, it's gonna show up very small on this screen, so you're better off kind of following along by just going there yourself. So if you do scroll down the page, TMS, TPS data portal's here. A TPS data portal is, you know, where we put all the data that we can get about the school district. I update it as regularly as I possibly can, but, you know, in the past, sometimes there would be these reports just one time a year about different, you know, aspects of the school system. The purpose of the data portal is that this is updated on an ongoing basis as information is available. So it's not just once a year, and we do tend to come back and talk to the board about it every couple of months as kind of a more view, and we also can do that in subcommittees as well, but it's traditionally been something we do with the board. And you'll notice that there are quite a few categories here. Some of these, like, some of these will have information that are up to even February. Most of the time, something like ELA or math or science, they're gonna have updates based on their, what's called IABs, which is interim assessment blocks, or they're gonna have updates from their beginning of year universal data to their mid-year universal data. So the purpose of it is to really give the board and the public an idea of some of the depth that the district goes into. And these are examples of the data sets that we, you know, look at and analyze. So you'll notice that if you click on any of those, that generally there are district overview thing, you know, data points like the Tallinn Performance Index, which I'll go into in a minute, but then you can also go as deep as you want into the rest of them. You can look at our DIBELS, you can look at our DORF, our days, our writing assessments, you can look at the oral reading fluency scores, you can look at Vanderbilt Assessment, which is an assessment of math. And the goal is always to get the kids from their BOI performance on grade level. Obviously, when they're just starting in a grade, you know, grade five, you know, they're, they're being tested on their mastery of grade five. At the beginning of grade five, they're not gonna have mastery of grade five. But when you see MOY and EOI data, the goal is by the end of the year, the vast majority of them are in the green or have mastery of that grade. And so all of that, those efforts tie into our standardized assessments, which ultimately are now in the state of Connecticut codified in the accountability scores. The accountability scores are a broad set of things that they evaluate a school system on, and those are, those are also provided in here too. And you can go as deep or shallow into it as you want, but I'll kind of go through the English, math, science, you know, information as flyover kind of exposure. You can go in deeper if you want later, then I will segue to the performance index and kind of tie it up with the performance index. But each of these data sets has been updated so far to the most recent information that we have on these particular, these particular assessments. And that also includes the PSAT SAT results. And as I said, we've done very well, we're within the, I think it's the top three in the, you know, PISA, the SATs, and R D U R, it's also a top five in our accountability matrix. So your school district is performing extremely well. We also put transportation information, there's a monthly report. Now that we have the ability, or families have the ability to track through GPS mapping and everything, their locations, we really haven't heard a lot.
You did a good job.
We really haven't heard from parents on that, really. So when you see the, you know, this is the, what I shared was the most recent, the most recent transportation reporting out for January, for instance, and it's pretty basic. It just does a hundred percent, you know, on time for them, for most of it, and things like that. So to kind of dive into it, again, it's best if, I can click on it here, but you know, again, it'll be a little small. If you can, clicking on your own laptops, you'll be able to see more information. To give an example on English Language Arts, and there's been a lot of changes because our ELA population has risen dramatically the last few years and so on. So if you look at universal, universal data update, the first thing you'll see is the middle of the year, and off to the right, you can see what red, you know, red, yellow, green equates to. Unfortunately, those categories are yellow, yellow, and yellow, but you can see that it was, unless you're doing the ZOOP test or the ZROO test, remember that, where they would put up something and put up a color red, and then put the name, you know, word blue, and you had, anyway, these are all yellow. So if you take a look at it, if you look at the universal data, you can see the percentage of students in green, yellow, and red. Green is they are at or above the target goal. Yellow is that they're approaching and they're on a radar for continued remediation and progress monitoring, and red would be, you know, possibly moving into tier two, you know, tier two supports to help them move along. They're, they're not, you know, rolling along at a higher percentage. So, and you'll see to the left what the category of assessment is. Letter name fluency, phoneme segmentation, nonsense word fluency, word reading fluency. And this is to give you an idea of the many, many things that we assess for in universals, and every single child gets them. And then when we do get the results, we do progress monitoring, meaning we will then address the kids' needs based on the performance they've had on universals, and also assess our own performance and how well things are going. So if you take a look at it, for instance, letter name fluency, for this point in the year, for about eighty percent, to be in the green is pretty, pretty good. Generally, that's, that's what you want to see because by end of year, you know, you want that to be into the nineties, something like that. Generally, that's, that's what you want to see because by end of year, you know, you want that to be into the nineties, something like that. So for a mid-year situation, you know, being up there is, is a good thing. Nonsense word fluency, not so great. So they're going to be working on that. But some of these also go along with the developmental stages of kids and sometimes groups get things a little bit easier than others. So you want to be somewhere in the at least halfway point of mastery or in the seventy, you know, percent part of mastery somewhere in the middle of the year so that you can be in a ninety position at the end of the year. And generally, that's what we have done is you'll see those pop right up into the nineties across the board. Some of them are already in the eighties and nineties. Oral reading fluency is amazing. You know, that's what a work is, you know, the, sale these acronyms, but you know, you, you get a good sense of, there's a lot of success going on here with kids in the eighties and that's not, that's a pretty good thing for the people.
Could I, while we're on the screen here, so just, just so I'm understanding the numbers here. So if you go to the grade two oral reading fluency accuracy, you know, the goal's ninety-six, you're at ninety-three point seven. But how do you have twenty, almost twenty-three percent are in the danger zone there? In my name, how is that calculated like that?
Well, it's, it's out of the number of kids that are taking it. So it's all the, all of the kids in a grade. And so you will sometimes have a group that struggles with that. And sometimes they struggle with some things more than others. And so they know by doing the mid-year that you've got that population of kids still struggling with it. It allows them to then start using tier two and tier three supports for kids. You know, that's, so they'll give this and they gave it fairly recently. They get these results and then they respond accordingly. So it's, it's really not so much, remember that what you're looking at right now is not like a, a one-year snapshot. The purpose of it, the purpose is to identify populations that are struggling with some of these and then address them with intervention. So you're going to definitely have a group that might be in the twenty, ten, twenty or something. And that's then you, you focus your energies and interventions on those group, that, that group per se. There's names associated with it. And so you go back and say, well, what we're doing is not working for Walt. Walt's in this red category, which means we need to pay particular attention to Walt. We might be moving Walt into a tier two or three support system situation because of some of these, you know, scores. So the purpose is progress monitoring to see where they're at, make adjustments and then, you know, and then move forward. So you're not just getting like the accountability score. So a district might publish your accountability scores. Because wow, these are great, but these are what's happening under the hood. You know, under the hood, there's adjustments being made constantly. There's groups of kids performing, you know, great. There's groups of kids performing on margin. There's some kids that are not performing very well on some of these. And then we respond to those needs accordingly each time.
All right, I, I, but I get, maybe, maybe I didn't, what I'm saying is we're, in this chart, we're saying we're almost ninety-four percent graded, grade average score, yet we don't have almost twenty-five percent of the students are in the red. How can you be at ninety-four percent still have twenty-four percent in the red, I guess is more or less? How's this math working out in this formula? It just doesn't seem like it equates to me. We have twenty-four percent.
Well, that ninety-three percent might be.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's the grade average score for that item. And then it's, these groups are, you know, what, for ninety-six, you know, I understand what you're saying. How can you have them?
How can you have almost a quarter of all the line grade in the red?
Yeah, I'll have to check that one because it came from the ELA supervisor, if you know.
All right. Thank you. Sorry to take the time on that. I looked at it yesterday and it's all kind of.
Yeah, it might be a subject. So anyway, so if you look at, you know, each of these and each of the subject areas. So another example would be, oops. On math, so if I kind of scoot over to math. So and there are little descriptions of these and they do tend to be, you know, you have to blow them up on your screen kind of dense. But number corner assessments would be something that, you know, the district, some of you, I think, have seen some of this. So we did some of it on a walk instructional rounds at one point here where we talked a lot about number corner. And again, you have the red, orange, yellow and, you know, green. Sometimes they disaggregate into four levels. Anybody that, you know, is in a intensive area means that maybe they're entering, we might have to be giving them, you know, level three support. If you scroll down, you can see that there's a baseline. There's a October check-in. There's a January check-in. And you'll notice that the, you know, in, the goal here is obviously to move as many of them towards the green as you can. Sometimes there's fluctuations as you go along. A lot of things can affect these scores. So I'm giving you a sense of kind of what the district does at each iteration. We will then, you know, make adjustments based on what the check-in shows. So it's possible during a check-in that the content that was delivered between the, the October and the January point was more challenging for certain groups of students. So you'll notice that K, you know, from a green standard, they kind of dropped a little. That just means that, you know, wherever the shifts are, each of these percentages equates to some, to someone, to a child's, you know, a series of children's names, and then we will then adjust. Progress monitoring is meant to have kids coming in and out. So kids will drop, you know, into tier two supports for things they need. They come out of them, tier two supports back to tier one. And so there's constantly kids going in and out across the board. So you can, you know, get a sense of what, what happens here. There's never an end to doing universal assessments. Universal's purpose is not to demonstrate, you know, something politically like an Sback or an SAT score. The purpose of universals and check-ins is diagnostic. From here to here, which groups are struggling? From here to here, which groups are struggling? So the content might be different between two check, check-ins. And that just means that the kids in the second, you know, in this particular set are not, you know, are not, or need a little bit more attention now than they, you know, than they did before. So we keep an eye on that and it's constantly changing. And you can scroll down and see the Vanderbilt assessment for K. You can look up what the Vanderbilt is. But you want to see again, as many of them progressing towards the green as you can. So you see the BOI and then you see the MOI. And you can see a shift from the red and yellow to the green as you get towards the middle of the year. Going from that, you know, fifty to sixty-one and sixty-four to seventy and, you know, all of that. Sometimes they fluctuate a bit up and down. But again, the purpose is to make sure that we're progress monitoring. You know, again, it's not a score that like would be reported in the newspaper or something. It's strictly, you know, like testing yourself along the way and or testing a child along the way. And when they're having a issue with whatever your content was, going back and providing them support. It's, the purpose is to identify populations and groups of kids that need support. So it's in here so that you can see that there's a lot that the district does with data. And these are examples of what our data teams do. They get together, they analyze where the populations are, who are comprised, who's comprising that eighty or seventy or fifty or sixty percent, and then taking appropriate action to make sure the kids are getting the information. You know, the, the education that they need, the remediation they need, necessary, the intervention they need as, as needed and so on. If you go to science, again, science is, and I'll try to get up there too. Science is a little kind of hard sometimes to sort of interpret, but that's called interim assessment blocks. And the sciences interim assessment blocks, you have them in other, in other, other disciplines as well. But the interim assessment blocks are, are normed to be difficult so that not everybody is going to master them. They're like a check-in for us again. So if they're doing an interim assessment block of the science ones, we're not well-developed by the state. So we've been trying to work on them ourselves, develop them ourselves. And we worked with CREG to develop a series of them, supervisors working on developing a series of them for the kids. But you can see that the raw scores, generally you're looking for something between a three and a five for the populations that take these interim assessment blocks. Five shows high mastery, but a three is generally showing, you know, your proficient understanding. You're trying to get as many of them to the five as you can, because then that will reflect on the NGSS. If you can get kids in that range, they're going to get the comparable stuff usually on an NGSS score. So the interim assessment blocks are kind of our canaries in the mine, so to speak, along the way. And if you have, you want to see those high bars in the three, four and five, which is kind of what we have there. If you see the, you know, the highest ones in the one and twos, then you know you've got a lot of work to do between now and the interim assessment block. I mean, now and the NGSS. The NGSS is not tested in every grade. It's tested in five, eight and eleven. So that can make it even more tricky because you're trying to, you know, make sure kids, you know, between the grades of five and eight gets, you know, there's myriad of, you know, a lot of content. And then again, from eight to eleven, a lot of content. The other part with the NGSS that's difficult is there's no particular reason for a high school child to buy into it. Which is why they replaced the Sback in the high school with the SAT because they figured more kids would buy into taking an SAT. Not as many kids really want to take. And when they find that there's no real purpose for them behind it, they're kind of like, you know, making houses and doing things, you know, like. What we used to do with bubble sheets, they do the equivalent, you know, sometimes electronically. So, but overall, the NGSS stuff is, is looking up. You know, we had a couple of burps there, especially over COVID. We cannot dedicate as much time to science as we do to ELA and math. So you'll find, and this is what's happening in social studies too, because social studies is definitely the Cinderella. Science is probably, you know, the cart, pumpkin. And then ELA and math are the prince and the princess of this thing. Because ELA and math are the most intensively tested, so ELA and math get most of the attention and most of the minutes. Science is now two times a week usually. Social studies maybe once a week. And that's not in six twelve, we're talking K five. So K five, it's usually alternating, but at least science is getting two or three times a week. Social studies is really shoved to the back because there's no assessment. So because the state's not assessing it, it tends to not get as many minutes. Which is something I'm trying to work on fixing because I think we, you know, we really need to, we need, you know, fix that in K five. But we're not that different from other districts in that way. The state wants your attention on the math and the ELA. And then the science, you know, second to that. And social studies, until you hit six twelve, you're not getting a solid day-to-day social studies curriculum. You're getting sort of the exposure type stuff, mapping, you know, formal times. So, so anyway, you can see where the NGSS stuff, the scores are. You can see back through November and June. You can see that in general, we're, we're heading in the right direction for that. We did, if you go far enough back, have some real burps with respect to how it was going. You know, way back, especially over, right, coming after COVID. But what I try to do with this for the data portal is not just give you one snapshot, one moment in time. In full transparency, I'm giving you everything from the begin, or everything I have from the beginning of, in the inception of the court. So you can look at, in this case, I think it goes all the way back to twenty twenty-one. So there's three years of these kinds of data points in here. So you get a sense of what's going on. So it's not just the board getting, you know, this one a year report, one time a year report on, you know, the basic accountability matrix and all that. It's you're getting the opportunity to dip in and out whenever you want and the public does too. Because it's, it's linked to everyone to see how they're doing, how they're doing in the dibbles, how they're doing on the DORF, the days. What are the things that, what are kind, what is a universal assessment? How is it being applied? How are the kids doing on the universal assessment? How did they do mid-year? How did they do end of year? How does that relate to some of our broader scores? So it's meant to provide a lot of transparency on these kinds of things. And I think you'll find that, you know, as far as other districts are concerned, we provide the most data of a lot of other places. You're not, you're not generally going to see this kind of data, you know, out there. Sometimes that's because they're afraid people will misinterpret it. Once again, when you're looking at certain things on a, you know, on a, on a dibbles kind of scoring, it's not meant to be compared from district to district. It's meant to progress monitor. So that's why sometimes people won't put it up there is they don't want people to get confused. You're going to have lower scores at your BOI and MOI. That is actually how it's supposed to work. Because they're not going to be at grade level yet and you're working on populations to get them there. And so it's just giving you an idea of how schools use data and, you know, that type of thing. Social emotional welfare, we don't have a lot of SEL data yet. So some of that's still going to be old. What that has there is it's got the, the SERVA data results. We have a substance abuse and risky behavior assessment that we gave in twenty twenty-two. We're probably going to give it again in twenty twenty-five. We give it, you know, roughly every three years. We spent a lot of time developing it. It was referenced in the Substance Abuse Task Force from the town. And the, the, the one that came before it was the Erase Survey from twenty fourteen. You can see what things were like from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-two. They're not apples to apples completely, but you get a sense of it. The Erase Survey used to be paid for by the state of Connecticut. So the reason why you see an eight-year gap there is we would, we had to develop our own. And that required resources, time, energy. And so we, we were able to get that completed. And now we can give our own SERVA survey every three or four years like the Erase used to do. So without going into great detail there, you'll be able to see some of the most important data points. With respect to kids' use of things like marijuana, you know, they report their use of alcohol, report their use of marijuana. Now, how, you know, things like that. Now, how we use this data, one year, one of the things I did was in, because of these assessments, one of the things the kids reported was that, I think, some, was some really concerning number of kids, twenty-five percent at the middle school level were getting into a car with someone that they knew was intoxicated or otherwise, otherwise out of it. And when we looked into it, because when we see a data point like that, we drill deep, deeper, what was happening sometimes was that they were siblings. And mom and dad couldn't pick up the child. So they called the sibling and said, go pick up your brother, but go pick up your sister. They, and they didn't realize that brother or sister had been inviving. And then the brother or sister who were older didn't want to admit to their parent that they were. So they got in the car and went to pick up the, the younger sibling. And they didn't want to admit to mom and dad they had been. And so that's why the kid got in the car. And then, you know, it was pressure for the child to get into the car with their sibling and all that. And the parent doesn't know. So that was one of the reasons that was driving that. And then we were able to do kind of an education program about that and say, you know, watch out, you know, this kind of thing is something we noticed. And I, I met with the kids at the time and said, you know, it's going to be tough, but you're going to have to call mom or dad or go to your admin, you know, do not ever get into a car with someone who's been like this, you know. We get, it allowed us to actually drill down and start to provide programming that made a difference for kids. And, you know, that's the kind of thing you can do with the data when you see it in those kinds of areas. PSAT, SAT results, again, you can kind of scroll through the time there, but you will, you know, you'll see, if you look at it, that we are, we're up there in the top three. You know, that's, that's a good thing. We've been talking about that in the past. They do a good job. The teachers are amazing. Where it's a competitive group that we're in. And so, you know, that, that's good for us as a data point. It also helps because one of the things that I have been doing, and I'll be talking to the board more about this, and I did talk a little bit about it already, we are looking to expand our relationship with other towns. And there are some other towns who might be interested in their children attending here. Because they're too small, which would allow us to have an offset, fairly significant, you know, reasonable thing. That we could have a mutually beneficial relationship, having, you know, SAT scores like that, you know, benefits us. Also, all the other things that, you know, that we have that are assets for our local district for our kids really benefits us. So, you know, there's some really good, good things that attract people to us and we're seeing that. And there's going to be more on that later. I'll be asking some board members to participate in some things moving forward in the fairly near future. I'm talking to the chair about that and the question. You know, the standardized testing pandemic impacts. The hard part about this is it's kind of hard to get a sense of what happened after the pandemic. And the color coding sometimes makes people's eyeballs go sideways. And the color coding sometimes makes people's eyeballs go sideways. Um, but these are cohorts. Um, and so when you look at the yellow cohort from the top, that is the, you know, the third graders, the previous year's cohort, they're kind of separated. So you can see the difference between grade to grade. Um, so if you go down, you know, we had a couple of COVID years where there was no testing. Um, so the cohort yellow should be similar down the line for the years, but it gets a little convoluted because we, we didn't have it. So, um, the better thing to do really is to take a look across the columns. Um, and you can see that, uh, the delta from pre-COVID and then post-COVID. Um, we've actually been able to recover quite a bit from pre to post-COVID. Um, and again, sometimes people look at it as, you know, well, wait a minute, why, you know, seventy-seven, you know, shouldn't we have something more than that? Um, the thing is that, that actually having seventy-seven percent at three or above is quite a good thing for math in, uh, an SPAC perspective. That means that you've got them at proficient or higher. And, um, seventy-seven percent of the group is a, is a pretty big competitive, um, thing for standardized testing in Connecticut. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind is, um, this may change dramatically because the state of Connecticut may be ending SPAC at some point. Uh, it used to be that forty-six states were using SPAC. Now it's down to, I think, twelve or nine. Uh, states in the United States are abandoning SPAC. And so we may not see SPAC around for, you know, deep into the future. It's going to be interesting to see what happens. The main criticism of SPAC is it is a one-time snapshot that has sometimes three items on a particular competency. And if you don't hit the three items, you lose the ability, you know. So it's not looked at as something that is necessarily fair and comprehensive for all kids. Because it's a limited number of in items for competency area. It lasts for, um, a long time, takes up a lot of school time to deliver. Um, and, uh, it's ju, it has no real purpose for progress monitoring. So they're looking at evolving it into what, you know, is a more I A V kind of structure where you can use it more for progress monitoring, um, starting to kind of shift that tool to be something that's given maybe at intervals rather than at one big time of year. Um, kids also throw up and get really upset and can't scroll down. And it just gets to be this big thing. Um, that, uh, that, uh, I think the state is, is looking long-term to reevaluate it and many other states have. So that, that's kind of what's happening with this. But if you look across to the right, you can see that most of them, the deltas from eighteen, nineteen and the delta from twenty-one, twenty-two. Most areas we've gone up significantly, you know, either by anywhere between, you know, two to twenty-five points. When you see, uh, two to twenty point five, and then one, one area is twenty-six point six points, um, that we went up. So, you know, these are, these are reasonable and competitive. Um, you also, these get worked into a broader set of, uh, data points. The state of Connecticut does not expect nor want districts to look at SPACs in isolation. It wants to us to look at them, um, as an account of one, one score point in an accountability matrix. And so accountability works in a lot of other pieces like graduation rate. Um, it works in your attendance rates, your truancy rates. Um, it works in, um, some districts don't test all their kids. So, you know, I was looking at one district and I was like, wow, this is amazing. How do they get? And then I looked and they only tested an eighty-five percent of their kids, which means they're not testing, uh, other populations that would bring their scores down. So, um, not to say that, 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 that means that a child is in some way, you know, doing as well as another. It's just sometimes if you have students in certain intervention levels or special education populations, if you're not testing them, then naturally your scores will not reflect the entire spectrum of your body. So that's what the accountability matrix holds people accountable to is it says, you're testing ninety-five percent or more of your kids. Your attendance is this, you know, um, you know, at, at least this level or higher. Uh, they also have, um, they, what they call the achievement gap. And so districts and towns like Tallinn sometimes will have an achievement gap between students of special education and general education students' performance. Um, they also measure you on that, you know, are you bringing the kids, you know, are these child, these populations coming together? Are you closing your achievement gap? That's where you heard us talk about co-teaching. Co-teaching is doing an amazing job of getting more kids into CP and closing our achievement gap. Um, so each of the programs we have are designed for specific purposes. And that would be an example of one that is helping us with the achievement gap. So if you look on, click on the performance index, you can see that, um, and then you can see it. There's many kind of links in here that can bring you to more information if you want to see it.
Dr. Will, can you show that on the screen?
Yeah, yeah. So when you go to this page, you can, you can actually dive deeper by clicking on any of the other links around it. Um, you know, see the overall accountability, accountability index. Um, you can see, um, you know, the blow up of the, the, um, scores as well. Um, and so it, uh, we've done really well. We've risen from the eleventh position to the fifth position, uh, recently in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three results. I expect us to maintain that position in the top five or even increase it. Uh, as I've said in the past, a lot of things we're doing, you know, we have a focus on things that are going to continue to get us better and better performance on these. Uh, and so we have attendance, truancy and school avoidance committee. We talk about month to month, uh, our trends, what's going on. One of the indicators that, you know, you go up and down on are, are you getting your kids in school? You know, how many are truant? How many have school avoidance? How many are, you know, um, how many, uh, ten plus days out per year? So you might imagine what kills us sometimes is, you know, people go on vacations, we get dinged. Uh, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't go on vacation. It just means that the state of Connecticut is pretty tough with us on things like that. So if kids are out, um, you know, a certain number of days, then we get dinged. Um, and you, it's pretty, pretty rigorous in that. Uh, if you're out three days in a month, more than three days in a month, they qualify that child for that month as chronically absent. If you can believe the credit and for any reason. And then we get dinged on this thing, even if it was, you know, so it's weird. Now, the standard is very, very high. Um, but if you're out more than that, you can get dinged for more and more. So, um, so, you know, we've done a great job of taking the most serious situations and addressing them. And so we're doing better and better and better. And I expect us to continue to rise because that is one of the factors. So it's in performance, it's scores, it's area SPACs, it's all of those things. Um, but then they look at, you know, okay, so you've got this, but are kids coming to school? Do you have a short, you know, small achievement gap? You know, are they performing? Are your special ed kids performing as well as your general ed populations? Um, you know, are you able to, uh, do you have a high graduation rate? Are you serving all children with multiple programs in different ways to graduate? Um, LEAF helps us with those things. TTA helps us with those things. So bottom line is you can tell that, um, you know, we've done very well. We've risen, risen from the eleventh to the fifth position. Um, and, you know, they, you generally do compare it in your DIRG because that's your demographic reference group. It's the groups that are the same in population size and, and actually economics more, more or less. Um, you'll also notice at the bottom that there's the, you know, DIRG mean, the average, the median, all of that. Um, you know, we are well above the state of Connecticut. We're well above the, um, median and the average for our DIRG. So we're doing great in those two. Um, and so I think just, uh, kind of wrapping it up, you can see all of it here. Um, it's meant to help, uh, provide you with a kind of good idea of where things stand. I have to get an updated report here. This is two twenty-two, twenty-three. And if I have, you know, generally we don't have all the information until almost this point here. So if you take a look at the, um, profile, that's the last one I guess I'll share. And I'll kind of circle back with you. But the profile graduate matriculate, matriculation data. Um, you can take a look at where the, you know, what course is the kid taking. Um, but you can also take less, you can take a look at where they got accepted to college.
Where is that?
That is in your, um, if you take a look, it's the T H S profile and graduate matriculation information. Um, and so that gives you a lot of information about our school. But it also tells you where kids are getting accepted for college. So when you look at, you know, the, the, um, the listing for twenty twenty-two, you know, it's, it's a lot of schools you'd expect. And some that sometimes kids, you know, are interested in that I, I didn't know about. Um, but you also, you know, see the Boston colleges and the Ryans and the Bucknolls and George Masons and George Washington University and Hofstra. You know, you can scan through it and there's some that, you know, you can recognize quickly. And then there's others that maybe we aren't as familiar with, but, uh, Tallinn does a great job. And a very large number of kids go on, um, and they go to really great places. Usually they're going to a place that has something they're interested in. For instance, my daughter is interested in, you know, marine science, marine biology. So she's not going to be going maybe to UConn because UConn doesn't have stores, is not marine. Although every point is, but, you know, but Maine is. And so that may be where she goes up for that because Maine has a program. Um, and so sometimes they'll go to the place that has the program. But, um, you can tell those kids are really getting to go to the places they want for, for the programs they're interested in. And you have the, you know, the one-overs and, um, things like that. But you also have some of the other specialty things that may be in the university domain. So if you take a look at those, you can get a really good sense of, uh, where the kids are going. Um, and that's another part of the portal.
What a variety.
What's that?
What a variety out of what is a hundred and eighty kids.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And you know what's great? You haven't done this yet, but when you get to see the walk for graduation, which you all get to participate in, it's a, it's an amazing experience. It's one of the, um, the best and, you know, one of the times I look forward to most. Um, I'm going to just do a quick, I want to remind myself that I want to update that matriculation info. So, um, so anyway, circling back here, the last one is transport. But, um, I don't have a lot of new info for transport. So if you click on it, it's just going to be the overall performance. Um, for the, you know, for this last January and February will be completed soon. Um, a hundred percent completion in an hour, which, you know, the reason it's an hour is the requirement is an hour. Because there's a lot of ground to cover and they have to get them done in an hour. And then there's just some information, um, you know, sometimes there's certain reports they file for discipline. Uh, you know, drivers and training, there's a new, they're bringing on new drivers. Um, you know, so you may see some things that, you know, just gives the board kind of some information about what's going on, uh, for transport. So, so that's it in a nutshell, but the data portal is updated, uh, fairly regularly. You'll notice that we usually will talk about it quarterly or trimesterly here.
Thank you, Dr. Will. Any questions?
Okay, just a few. Is there, so going back to the science portion of this. Uh, because of the lack of, of tracking of those scores, um, have the, and is there data to show that we've had fewer science-related majors coming out of Tallinn? Um, has that had an impact on anybody coming out of Tallinn and their wish to go study science further?
No, I, I think actually, uh, we have a lot of interest in science in Tallinn. You know, we have the, the engineering pathway. We have, um, for robotics, uh, tomorrow with STEM FEMs. Uh, a lot of programming that are, you know, they're, and they're awesome. STEM FEMs is a specifically, specific science program for females. Uh, where they get exposure to a lot of things because there, you know, there aren't as many women in science. Um, but we have probably ten science field trips. Uh, so there's actually a lot of science going kids in here. Um, you know, what I do find is that because UConn is so close and UConn is an R1 university, there are not many R1 universities. We have one in our backyard. And that's, that's, you know, the engineering program there. If you've ever been there and you walk through it, it's fantastic. So we get a lot of our kids going there who are interested in engineering and science because it's excellent. And we have a cooperative arrangement with them. So we have a bunch of kids going up there to view the seniors' final science projects or engineering projects. At UConn, they have this end of year, um, kind of showcase of what the seniors have done for a project. All engineering students have to have a project. It's amazing stuff. There's jet engines, there, you know, updates. There's all kinds of, uh, things these young, you know, people have done. And our kids link up with them and then ask them questions. And they have their own power plant up there. I don't know if you've ever gotten a chance to tour it. It's also really interesting. Um, and so the kids, uh, they connect with that group. So I would say a lot of kids now, um, what they're interested in science and engineering since it's so close. You know, also if you have recently taken a look at it, um, having in our backyard is amazing. A lot of our kids get into it. A very large number of kids get into UConn, which is also no small thing now because they had, uh,
A record attendance.
Record, record number of applications. Their acceptance rate is actually quite low and competitive. And a lot of our children get, a lot of our young adults get into it. So, um, you know, really, Tallinn's an amazing district to work for, amazing district for kids to be in. You know, a very strong performance, uh, you know, and, and that's, I think, why too, we're getting interest. You know, as I reach out, um, I'm going to see if we can get, um, some of you involved in some things, uh, chairs. Uh, because we're going to be looking at partnerships. And that is one of the ways we can, you know, through these partnerships, offset some things or in a big place.
Um, and then on, in regards to the performance index, does that account, does, does, does that data account for, uh, students with plans in place with the school? So even if you've got, you know, a plan in place that, you know, might end up being late because of this or that, that's still docking.
Yeah, the state has, the state dings us. And the state will dinge us on, they're pretty rough on that stuff, but it is what it is, you know, um.
And then my final thing is just an observation. Um, it'll be fascinating to see the results for, um, that survey with the, the, uh, the, uh, the risk survey, um, specifically marijuana because of the recent legalization in Connecticut. So that's the first thing that came to my head, which is, is probably a lot more accessible now.
I, I would expect that data going to change significantly. We've had a number of issues with that.
Great, gotcha. Very. Thank you.
I just want to just add on to what you're saying. Um, it's not just the engineering, but a lot of the other departments at UConn, my wife works there. They, a lot of them have these end of year projects and presentations and all of that. So it's probably other areas to explore and area partnerships with, in that regard, for students that are interested in a subject. Maybe they're not even going into that field or even a senior going and doing that. There's probably some other opportunities and, you know, reviewing that sort of.
Yeah, I, I focused on that. I think that was somehow connected to whatever something, someone had asked that they, this was for that. But, um, they have great programs and great end of years senior projects. And like, this will be, my, I have two children that one is graduated, one is there. Um, the Connecticut schools, uh, university network is great. So, you know, UConn's amazing, store is amazing, but also, um, you know, your, your central is amazing. East Con is amazing, West Con is amazing. A lot of resources you have around here for little, for kids and a variety of price points. Uh, so, you know, there's, it's great. And, and kids coming out of Tallinn are doing so well that they, a lot of them have their choice. You know, they can go to a number of different places.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Will, thank you. Moving on, new business, item L1, school year adjustment.
Uh, so this will be fun. Um, this is a conversation about, and I just have to close a bunch of windows for you to take a second. I apologize. Uh, essentially you have a hundred and eighty-two school days. I'll banter while I'm doing this. Um, and so when we have a, you know, a couple of weather days, generally it will come before the board. Um, to look at whether you would like to reduce the student year to what the state requirement is, which is a hundred and eighty days. Right now, the last day of school is June seventeenth. If we have, um, yeah, if we have, um, I gotta clean this up too. Apologies. But as I'm, as I'm cleaning it up, I'll talk her. Um, so right now, the last day of school is June seventeenth. You know, we're in Connecticut, generally the probability of having some strange weather event, even though it was amazing couple of days we had. And then it was raining and then you got the ever source notice that there could be something. It's not just, uh, snow that does this. What will happen is if you have a, you know, really heavy weather event with high winds, uh, Tallinn is just full of trees. Everyone loves trees, but those trees fall all over your roads and then that can cause delays. Sometimes it's caused cancellation. You can't catch that. So it could be a weather event, which we've had them all the way up through April. Um, it's possible to have a snow day as early as October and as late as March and April. So, uh, if you have another snow day, it's going to push that out to the eighteenth. So, uh, if you have another snow day, it's gonna push that out to the eighteenth. Your graduation is the fourteenth and families like to plan. So one thing you can do is you can take two days off. The student year. It has some marginal savings because you're not transporting them in buses. It's not a ton, but it does do, you know, there is something to be recruited there. Uh, and it would push the date back to currently the thirteenth. So if we have another snow day, it pushes us to the fourteenth. And then it's all aligned again because the graduation is the fourteenth. The kid's TMS promotion is the thirteenth. CIS and Virch Grove have their various things, you know, twelve, thirteen. And it gives the parent guardians, you know, a better idea of, hey, we could probably go on vacation starting in the seventeenth because they pushed the day back. So we will tend to get requests around this time of year of, uh, hey. What, you know, what are we doing? What's the last day of school? And is the board gonna look at that? Um, and so this is put in front of you to have that conversation. Uh, and you know, if you're gonna do it for one day, the conversation was, well, there's instead of coming back another two weeks from now. Either do the two days or don't do the two days. It'll give people an, an idea of what you, what your intentions are.
So, like, I, what I was going to ask you is, is if we took the two days off, what would happen if we did have a day? So if you just answer that, we tack it on. Um, so you know, we talked about this briefly, the agenda planning, I mean. Although I see where there could be a concern that we may still have a day or two. I also see it from the other side that, you know, and it's so funny because I actually got a text message yesterday. You know, especially in the older years with, with summer sports and whatnot, parents like to try to get out for vacations as soon as possible. So to have the last day of school be on a Monday right now. Kind of stinks if you're trying to plan and by the way, those flights aren't going up every day because I look at them. So. I do think that we should, you know, strongly consider at least bringing it into the next week so that parents will have, can start looking. And know that they're not just coming to school on Monday if I weren't a week.
Really?
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood. Is this a one-year? Option just for this year or is this like an ongoing thing? We just cut, because for next year, we just cut. Two and a half days out of that calendar.
Yeah, this, you're, you're talking strictly about this year. Next year's, uh, next year's work here is. Contractually stipulated, I think, to a hundred and eighty. I'm trying to remember which one. So you're, you are at one eighty next year without doing anything. We can't go below one eighty and that's just gonna be how that's. Contracted, it was contractually stipulated. But this year you have these two days to play with if you want.
Okay, thank you.
You know, my thought and then. It initially my, my question went to. You know, by reducing two days, what kind of educational time, you know, would we, uh, and I happened to mention that. During dinner today, my, my wife's kind of laughed and said. How much work do you actually think is going to happen on the Monday that they have to come back? I'm thinking way, way, way back to when I was in school on the last day was, you know, pretty fun time, but. So I guess my question is, you know, if we reduce one day, that brings us back into the week, uh, the previous week, we want the benefit of the second day then.
Just that you have a decent probability of another event happening.
So it gives cushion.
Yeah, it gives you a cushion. The, uh, the, it, it's just a weird space we're in. Usually when you have to make this call because you don't know what's gonna happen. Crystal ball wise and Murphy's law is always in effect. So if you don't do anything, we'll probably have ten more days, you know, whatever. If you do do something, you know, we'll probably end before graduation, you know, because if you do go back two days, technically. The last day of school is the thirteenth and then graduation's the fourteenth. So kids will have their end of school and come back the next day for graduation at the high school. But it is, it is what it is. It's hard to know for sure how it's gonna fall. Generally, the people do appreciate, if you do take the two days off, they know that that following week. Likely going to falling into it again is small, so that gives them an opportunity to plan.
Right, so what is the, uh, you, you're speaking about the situation being the fourteenth. Um, is this an even, what, what's the protocol or timeframe or how does that work in regards to if there was a full day of school that day? Or you usually have early release the last day?
Usually the last day of school, you know, and so normally the last day of school is your graduation day a lot of times.
Okay.
That, so that doesn't matter necessarily for the freshmen, sophomores and juniors unless they have a sibling. Um, the seniors, I can guarantee it will come back for graduation. You know, they won't come back for the seventeenth. But, but you'll generally, you know, it probably is not the end of the world if the last physical day of school is the thirteenth and then graduation is the fourteenth. Because kids generally want to spend that, you know, and, and they'll come back for it.
No, I was just also thinking the other side of the coin. You also do have a lot of people who work at nine to five and. Trying to find care or whatever for that last Friday. If they're in ninth grade, they can care less about the graduation. They're just. Looking for a coverage while, you know, they're going off to work. You're asking them to find the whole thing except starting. Maybe the following week. So you gotta look at that side of the coin.
Right, you know, you'd have two less days. People have to, for the youngest kids, you'll, you'll have to figure out, people have to figure out what to do with their two. With their children, two more days. You're right.
Which may be a benefit to making the decision early rather than later.
So I'm just, uh, I don't know, I have a, for making a decision here. I'm, I'm waiting for, just can't play out the seventeenth and having the. Whole day, but that's just me. I don't know. There's a certain feeling here.
Is it, is it, oh, sorry. Is what, I know it changes for, well, maybe it doesn't, but how does this impact how long staff are in the building?
It doesn't. Staff are a hundred and eighty day, a hundred and eighty-eight days no matter what.
No matter what.
Their contracts is a hundred and eighty-eight.
Well, in that case, if, if their last day is the seventeenth and now it's being pushed back to the thirteenth. Instead of getting out, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, on the twenty-sixth, would they get out on the twenty-fourth or that, that?
Have to learn, but they, they go, they, they, their number of days in is not affected by whether you. It's a hundred and eighty, yeah, or, or just sometimes there's a lot of putting stuff in boxes and, you know, getting things set. Um. Uh, trying to think where it does sometimes affect it, but um, lost my train of thought here. I'll, I'm sure I'll get it back. Um, but I'm thinking, uh, one of the things that they will appreciate, I remember is, uh. You know, they don't love going into the seventeenth with a bunch of children. If it's hot and they're crazy, you know, that's the thing. What's farther into July, June it gets, the hotter it gets. We have geothermal systems and other things that we have, you know, that function, but. It still can get, uh, remember Ms. Cassidy's room, no matter what you do with that room, because it was facing the sun. And it was second floor, that thing starts getting hot even with AC. So, um. Generally, the kids get antsy and it's tough time to go too far into the air with them.
I was just gonna ask you if it's like, is it a big administrative burden just to do this once again if there are no impediments to?
No, not for me. It's just, uh, it's just you would be, it will not be a problem for me at all. It's just if you have people out there that kind of wanna have something to. Definitive. It's not necessarily definitive.
Cause I'd definitely be in favor of one day and doing another day down the road if there's a snow day, just for those people trying to plan, but. Just in, just in case that happens, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, it's all right.
Dana?
Um, yeah, yes, my question was, can we just? Take the seventeenth off and just do one day versus the two, which I think was just talked about would be my suggestion, because then it's even. Friday, you got the weekend. I hate to say it this way. I mean, I want every, every, my kids in front of educators as much as we can, but. How many kids are gonna miss that Monday? Anyways, I hate to say it that way. I mean, but. I don't know. It's just another thought, another thought on that is where I'm at.
So I see transportation savings and some other savings.
There is a small, small.
There's no impact in the opposite direction if we need that time back. So it's not gonna cost us more?
No, you've already, we already, you know, have.
Really?
Yeah, I'd be a little more inclined to go with the one day versus the two. Um, just. Saying, because of, if it's a Monday, I can see the point of that. Coming back for a Monday is not likely gonna be well attended anyway, but. Anyway.
If there is interest in making that call. Okay, just a, just a quick question, I'm sorry. So we, just a clarification question. Thank you. Um, if we push back one day and now we've got a snow day. Can you explain what's going on there? So if we push back one day, so now we're at the fourteenth, snow day happens. So we can't come back from table and say, we can't back.
You can just come back to the table and vote for that day.
Is there a time that, is there like a thirty-day window or something?
No, it's just, will you be able to, so where this becomes a rub is people wanna know for their own planning and.
Oh, no, I, I.
And then it's a couple of weeks until, let's say we have this snow day, but then it's two weeks until we have a meeting, you know, it gets pushed back and we. That's all.
Yeah, so if I would, if I were to vote, then my rationale would be, I'd be willing to do it again.
Well, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that's what I'd, that'd be a, I'm ready to get motion.
If we push back to the fourteenth, that gives us a hundred and eighty-one days in the school calendar. We're only required to have a hundred and eighty. If we have a snow day, we can still have a last day of school on Friday, the fourteenth. Because now we've missed one and we're still down to a hundred and eighty.
We still need to endorse it as a board.
Okay.
You have to make, take the.
But it wouldn't change the end date of that Friday if we only have one more.
No, you do one to get it kicked back and then you have another, you just do another day. You have to take action, you know, and, 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 you know.
So, that makes that, I'm entertaining the motion to move this to board action. So. Is there a second?
Uh, Bill, you got it.
All right, Jaden. Brian.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And then I, Jen.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Dr. Will, if you will put that in board action, I believe that is N one.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to old business M one, Board of Education goal setting.
Right, so this was the last, if you recall, there's this, you know, site that gives you all the steps. This was step five. This was the last step in your goal, goal setting process. Uh, you can tell that we're already using your goals. For those of you that were on the instructional rounds, we used the, um, Board of Ed goal. As one of our through lines with our portrait of a graduate. So when we do have board goals, then I start, you know, and start incorporating them into our operations. So, um, you know, so just, just as, you know, as a side, we, we used it in the, um, development of our ICL programming. And the direction of our ICL programming and you saw it in instructional rounds today. Uh, this piece right here is probably hard for people to see at home, but it is the document we've been working through. Um, this is the same one that was available in the January twenty-fourth meeting. It's, uh, you know, we didn't get to it at the twenty-fourth, but it's the same. So you'll notice in the left side and there's no particular rationale to the color coding, just other than just, you know, here's your goal. Um, I'm gonna type these, you know, your, your thoughts into my laptop. I'm not gonna try to type it into the. Keyboard that we have here because there's lag when I do. So I'll type and then it'll, it won't, it won't go and it'll jump forward like five words. And it's very hard to type that way. So you're gonna see it reflected on there, but I'm gonna type the things you're talking about into the laptop here. Otherwise, uh, I found that it's quite difficult to do that kind of work with this, this particular setup here. Um, so the best way to see it, if you're at home, um, you, you, this will become a document that we can publish. Um, the goal process was push back from the tenth to the twenty-fourth to today. So, um, board members, you do have access to this. Uh, it's on through the dashboard, that site that we set up. If you wanted to look otherwise, um, you can see it here. And then we can publish it when you're all done and it's a final copy. So when you look at the board goals, I'll read them, engage in transparent, robust and responsible budget process that maximizes innovation and efficiency. And supports student growth and is well communicated community. Um, you would be looking at, you know, what are your, you know, clear expectations? What are your hopes for this area? Creating conditions for success? What are you willing to support so that the expectations can be met? System accountability, you know, um, what are some, what is the evidence we're going to say? What are indicators of success? That would demonstrate that we had success here. And then how do we build public support for the goal? So those are across the board, um, considerations for each of your goals. So the other goals would be nurture and support a just, equitable and inclusive school community. Where all stakeholders are acknowledged and respected. Foster data-driven, positive learning environment focused on strong academics, professional development and meaningful social and emotional supports for students and staff. And then ensure that our school properties provide strong safety, security, structure and wellness conditions for all students and staff. So, um, at this point, we can start some brainstorming here and then what I'll do is I'm gonna kind of just. Take down what you're brainstorming and I'll refine it and make it succinct. So whatever you're sharing, I'm gonna pare it down into something nice and. Bully. So, uh.
All right, who wants to go first? Okay, I'll just add this. And this is gonna sound, I don't know how to word this, but for the first one, I can only see a portion of it. No, no, not because of you.
Oh, okay.
No, excuse me. But I, I'm seeing it on the Zoom, so I'm just only seeing a part of a, a first goal, but it's on our agenda as well, but. Um, in the first goal there, um, when we're talking about transparency and being responsible with our budget process, I think, you know. It's hard to measure, but gaining trust from the public. I mean, that's, that's one of, that's one of my greatest hopes. Uh, for the district in this area. That's one of my own big, greatest hopes for the board as well. Am I not understanding what the goal is here?
No, I.
I think you are. Am I?
Yes.
Because I, I don't know. As I'm saying that, it just doesn't feel like that. I don't know.
So I think let's taking it one step at a time and we don't have to complete it tonight, but, um.
Can you just tier down a little bit? Does, it, it's kind of like, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, there you go.
You know, the other thing is, uh. It may be easier for you to look at this, um. You know, it's shared on the dashboard. What I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna copy this link and I'm sending it out to your email addresses. So it's right at the top.
Thank you.
It's probably easier for you just to click on that and look at it and trying to look at it on here because it's, it's tight.
So let me, let me just ask, just a general question.
But it is on that site too that I set up.
Cause it, it's, I mean, it's a lot. Ben and Jayden, I appreciate you, um, stepping out there and asking like that, but I'm looking across at eyes across the world. Um, would it be better? Would it be better to take this opportunity, like Dr. Will has explained, kind of what we're looking for in this chart? Let each person take maybe a week or two at home, submit your thoughts to Dr. Will. If Dr. Will, if you could coalesce that. Yeah, and then we could come back with the ideas already jump, terminated up there and then just edge it down now.
Sure.
Any complaints or concerns? Love that idea.
First, second, third?
I first.
I mean, the reality is we, we haven't looked at this in a while, so. I, I didn't quite understand the, the.
And it is.
We're gonna look at tonight.
It, it's not an action, you know, it's not a board action here, so we don't have to vote to move it. Um, it's just something we can, we can discuss further here, but if the understanding is solid, then we can move on and, and to that one. I will say, I still stand by what I said, right, about our goal. The minute you know that Jayden had the only idea. Any other comments on kind of what we're trying to get here?
So just a bit, you're gonna be, you'll email that out to us or we'll send it back.
Yeah, what I'll do is I will create, I'll take the, the board goals and I'll take the crosswalk at the top. And ask you to submit your thoughts for the, you know, each goal, you know, what you, what, what setting clear expectations looks like to you. Uh, what conditions for success for that goal looks like to you, what system accountability looks like to you. Um, what in building public support for it would look like to you for each goal? Well, I'll get you guys to, I'll submit that and then I'll present your own aggregated information back to.
Yeah, uh, sounds would be a better plan. All right. Moving on then.
Board action N one.
So you have a proposed motion there, and you just make it one day.
Right, so.
Make it one eighty-one rather than one eighty.
If the, and it's up to whoever proposes the motion, one day, two days, whichever way you want to go, I will entertain a motion. Motion to reduce the total of public school student school year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four from one eighty-two to one eighty-one, to one hundred and eighty-two days to one hundred and eighty-one.
Side of that.
Discussion, again, that is the one day reduction, moving the last day of school to the Friday, the fourteenth.
I'll just say, like, I don't wanna, I feel a little too tired to go over this, but if we do get to a point, maybe in a month or so, where we haven't had a day, I'd say, why don't we look at it again and maybe think about taking that day off?
Absolutely, sure.
Especially for that tiny bit of savings, because I'll take any tiny bit of savings you can get right now, and I'll let you guys.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Take two votes, Jaden.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hi, Jen.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Reenie.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Dr. Willis, you got that? Excellent. All right, moving on, public participation. Again, comments must be limited to items on this agenda. We will alternate between the phone lines and the phone room. But you never know. All right. Hearing none. Move on, points of information.
Hey, I'm sorry, I couldn't be at, um, the instructional rounds this morning. I was scheduled to be there two weeks ago, and then it got moved, uh, due to the hearing, and so, uh, nobody's fault. So, um, I hope it went well. I hope everybody took something out of it. Um, I think I'm at one in March, bit, I want to say March, something, something like that, um, in a week or so. So I'm looking forward to that, but, um, again, I apologize, I couldn't make it. Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, um, I feel badly that I didn't mention it in the first points of interest, as I think Dana and Tony had said. It was a fantastic rounds of TMS today. Um, we did social, emotional learning, um. You know, I, I, I think it was so great to see it in action. Um, we had discussed it at the TMS rounds last year, and really, um, you know, had staff telling us what a need there was for a change, um, in the culture and climate there. And there was a, a certain downtrodden feeling, let's say, in the room. This year, it was completely opposite. It was invigorated staff. It, um, they had, they just couldn't get enough information out to us. Um, the, you know, what, seeing the classrooms is always great. Um, again, seeing the progression, sixth grade, seventh grade, and Brian and I got to go into an eighth grade. I don't think Tony and Dana did, but we did. And, you know, watching at the different levels, how the students, you know, interact and participate was just really fantastic. Um, you know, and then we tied, we were able to tie it to curriculum and talking about Portrait of a Graduate and how the process came about, and, um, it just, it, it's so hard to sum up because it's such a big, wonderful, um, program. But it, um, it really ties together, uh, our school and the best way to educate our students. And it, it was fantastic. So thank you so much to the staff, um, who really, again, were, couldn't wait to talk about, like, couldn't give us more information, couldn't have been well prepared. And, um, of course, thank you to the students who allowed us to walk into their classrooms and didn't seem to mind at all.
You know, the thing that, that really got me, and, and you know, I have to admit that before today, my, my understanding of all of the nuances was limited. You know, I, to, to use that phrase, I, you know, I didn't know what I didn't know. Uh, but as we're going in those classes, and poor Dr. Willis had to be the guy that drew the short straw and asked me, and many of those of them whispering the questions and my, my new reading list. Uh, but the part that really got me was the passion. And we had one of the sessions where we had the, uh, the committee that was put together last year and has been developing now, and are now taking some of the feedback, they're getting, developing the next thing. And to a person, they, they, they weren't talking about a job, they were talking about a task. They were talking about something that they all felt so critically, and, you know, there were, there were teachers that talked about, you know, how they really got sold on the ELO the past couple of years. There was one that was talking about just the criticality of doing this. And, and, you know, I, I kept asking myself, you know, twenty, thirty years ago when I was in school, you know, we didn't have things like this, and, you know, why do we need it now? And it was like they anticipated those questions, and, and those were really coming out there. And, I mean, I walked out of there with a complete new understanding. It was just an amazing experience, and, you know, they all have been. But there's some, some documents that the, the teachers and the staff put together that, you know, Dr. Willis, we could post some of those things that, that are already posted for the board to look at. The book, the two-point-O book that they, that was mentioned, you know, that kind of stuff, anything you can get your hands on, it's, it's intriguing.
You know, I'd just echo some of what Tony said, and the passion from the, from the people on these committees and what they're doing and how they're experiencing different grade levels and interaction. I'm trying to get some of the, you know, some of the staff and teachers who are on the, no, I don't want to try this bandwagon to, you know, they're all gung ho now, you know, going with the train, so to speak, to implement this. So it was very remarkable in the transition and how it was used in all the different grade levels and stuff. But yeah, absolutely, thanks for all the teachers and staff that did put that together. And, yeah, they, they just, the, the, the amount of information they had, and want to continue. I mean, we, we could have been there all day long and still probably had more to say for them, so, yeah. Remarkable.
I, I love their administration, uh, Dr. Willis, that the, the two administrators there were not holding anything back. Were absolutely honest to the, the strengths, the weaknesses, the, the problems, the successes. The entire process they laid out there for us in a way that, you know, was understandable and was, it was passion. I mean, it didn't use that word.
Dana.
Um, so before I start, well, before I start going into my thing, ditto. To what you all said, um, it was absolutely phenomenal. Um, I've been lucky enough to go to three TMS rounds now, and the first was COVID when they were talking about the one-to-one tech, technology, why that was so important. Uh, and then last year, Jen, you know, I, we were involved. And like you said, the mood was completely different today than it was last year. Um, they were talking about all the work, all the effort that they have put in, and now they're starting to see results. They talked about the trajectory, um, how the time that it's taken for them to get to here, and then what the trajectory is going forward. Um, it was very positive. Uh, Ms. Estevez had said, you know, that this, the SCL, um, classes that, that is paying dividends in the, in the core curriculum classes. It's really truly making an impact, um, without belaboring anything. I, I would just, again, and I told them today how appreciative I was for having them host us. Um, as Brian said, we probably could have been there for another eight more hours or another week, to be honest with you. Uh, it was phenomenal. Um, but nevertheless, I, I would, I would truly, you know, if anybody has a chance to do these rounds, please put it in, in, on your agenda. It is very eye-opening, it's wonderful to hear the staff, um, see what they're doing, and actually seeing these programs um, that we talk about through budget process, um, these core curriculum classes that we talk about through budget process, and these, you know, the class sizes and all of that. We had to see it in full action today, and it wasn't just a classroom, it wasn't just a program. This literally was the core community, because every single educator at Tallon Middle School was talking about the same thing today. And they were all aligned, and it impacted them in the hallways, it impacted them in the classrooms, it impacted them it with their, with their counselors, so on and so forth. So it was brilliant, they, they tied it all back to our, our board goals, Portrait of a Graduate. They did a lovely job, and it was fantastic to see, and it was just a really positive, positive morning. Uh, so again, Dr. Willis, I intend to email the administration, you know, administrative staff at TMS, but please, uh, forward my thanks, and, um, I really am appreciative of the students and the staff that invited us into their, to our classrooms today. It was, it was a wonderful day.
A little plug that the next one coming up, uh, is BGP on the twenty-second. Virgic was the future. Well, I'm sorry. But anyway, just, you have to, you'd have to register for these, so you go on the site, and, well, you don't have to, but it helps us know who's coming. Uh, so just plugging that, you know, that, the signup page that it sent out, you know, please let us know. They're great, they're great to do, um, so I'd like to see you there.
Isn't it just another, like, before we move on, if there are things like this that you're curious about, you know, as, as board members, it's where we're talking about all these different programs. I know Lexia was one of a few years ago that I just needed to know. While it may not be an instructional round, please, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign, volunteer you, but please email Dr. Willis. He can and has, for me, uh, provided reading lists, provided opportunities to sit down. We had an hour-long conversation on the theory behind Right to Read. So, um, this, being on this board offers you an incredible opportunity to learn about these things you may not ever have the opportunity to, so take advantage of it. Just to clarify, that was March twentieth.
Yeah, March twenty-second is the mathematics instruction and programming instructional round for BGP. And then you can see what that looks like. Then April fifth is the ELA, structured word literacy at TIS.
Let's put that list in. I'll read that in the future. And I'm just, I got March and April backward.
All right, Jen.
All right. I'll take a month.
Tom?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion?
Aye. Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
And.
Aye.
Yeah, I said, aye, Reenie.
Aye, I already said it, but.
And there it is again.
Thank you all.